Good evening. It's October 6th, 2025, and this is a session of Athens City Council. I'm Micah McCary, Acting President this evening, also Acting Finance and Personnel Committee Chair, and we'll check for quorum. We see that we have all members of council present, and we do have a committee meeting for Finance and Personnel to get things started before we have our regular session this evening. So because there's just one item for discussion, I'll ask all council members to go ahead and remain at the dais, and then we'll begin with Finance and Personnel. We just have one topic today, and that is a brief discussion of issuance of bonds for our swimming pool refinancing. As some background, in 2016, the swimming pool bonds were issued to build the city's new pool complex. The current outstanding debt is roughly 4.9 million, paid annually from the city income tax fund, and the city's bond council and financial advisors have prepared funding bond documents. The refinancing will not create new debt. It simply replaces existing debt with a lower rate. So this is about saving some money. Interest rates have dropped since the original bonds were issued, and refinancing also helps stabilize annual debt service payments, which are currently around $550,000 a year. I will first ask the administration if they have any comments on this particular discussion topic before going to the public and then back to committee members. Mayor, do you have any comments on this swimming pool?
So Acting President McCary, you summed it up very well. We knew that we were going to find ourselves at this juncture in time where we would have the ability to refinance, but it was all predicated upon what the interest rate was at the time. You certainly don't want to do it if interest rates are higher than they used to be, but we find ourselves in that position now to where they are lower. This will lead to a cost savings, as you mentioned, because of the lower interest rate, and I have to give a lot of credit to our city auditor, Kathy Hecht, who has been tracking this. We've been watching, you know, we have a someone who's also been watching out for us, Ed Baird, who was our bond counsel for several projects, if I'm not mistaken, Auditor Hecht, but this is, council is the right thing to do, is to go out and continue to find ways in which we can save the city money, especially with this levy that is for recreational assets.
Excellent. Thank you. Do you have any members of, yes, auditor?
Well, I was just going to add that when we did this several years ago, after you have a hold a bond for 10 years, then you're allowed to refinance it. So we're at the 10-year mark for the pool. It's hard to believe, but this is not quite as much money, but last time when we did that, we saved the city $350,000. So I don't know that we'll get to that, but certainly anything that we save would be worthwhile. So that's what's going on there. I don't know whether to add now or not, but because we've started this process and our bond consultants have asked if council could suspend and adopt the ordinance to enter into this tonight because we just don't know what might happen as things go on. So just putting that out there. Even at this point, we won't be finished with this until December, but if we wait any longer, likely we won't get the same advantages that we will get by moving forward right now.
Thank you. And for the public's awareness, this is the reason why we're having the Finance and Personnel Committee meeting prior to our regular session, so that we've had a formal committee discussion before getting to the suspended action that the auditor has recommended. Do you have any questions about this item from the public? All right, back to committee members for questions and comments about this agenda item. Yes, Member Claude Keller?
I would just like to salute the auditor for noticing this and working with the bond consultant, and I think any chance that we have to easily save the city a lot of money is something we should look into.
Thank you. Any other council members from the committee? All right, seeing none, then that concludes. Oh, yes. Yes, do we have non-members who have comments? That's members, thank you.
Yeah, right now we're paying about $550,000 a year, $550,000 a year. With the decreased rate, what are you anticipating doing? Continuing paying $550,000 a year so that we pay it off earlier than we had planned, or reducing the amount we pay per year?
No. When we finance a bond like this, we get an amortization schedule, and we don't have the option of paying it off early, I don't believe.
We can't pay, like on a home mortgage, you can't pay more?
I don't know that it would get us anywhere, but I guess I could ask, but no, typically, I don't believe we're allowed to do that. Our advantage is the decrease in interest rate that we're paying on $4 million, which is, so it's a substantial amount.
Okay, yeah, yeah, no, understood. So with that said, when will we have these paid off? What year are we projecting?
Well, that's a good question. I didn't look that up. Give me one second here. It's due to be paid off in December 1st of 2035.
2035, okay.
Thank you, Members Swank. Any other members of council? Seeing none, that will conclude Finance and Personnel Committee for the evening, and we'll segue into our regular session of council. Again, we're beginning regular session, October 6th, 7:08 PM. All members of council are present.
Actually, excuse me, there's one missing.
Is that President Crowell?
No, actually.
Oh, Reisner, who I'm replacing. Yes, okay, I'm sorry. We have all but one member of council present, thank you, Law Director. And our first item of business is the disposition of minutes from September 15th, 2025. May I have a motion to approve?
Still moved. Second.
Wonderful. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Any opposed, say nay. Okay, minutes have been approved for September 15th, 2025. Next, we have communications from folks. Any council members have communications that they want to share at this time? All right. I will share that it is LGBT History Month, and I know that we have some members in the audience here to commemorate that, as this is the first Monday meeting of LGBTQ+ History Month, and I'll turn to the mayor if he has any reports and communications.
I know that you're aware of this, President McCary, but we did read, I read a proclamation on just last week declaring this LGBTQ+ History Month, and recognizing the amazing, I don't want to say contribution, just the amazing dedication of our entire community, and in particular LGBTQ+ community in the city of Athens. So just amazing. It should be a year, not a month.
Much appreciated. Did you have any other items for your report?
Oh, for my report? Oh, I, yes, I transitioned. Usually you go to the auditor, and now it gives me a little more time to pull my thoughts.
If you'd like, auditor, would you like to go first?
No, we're ready.
Okay, all right.
You gave me no time.
Pack a chance.
Thank you, President McCary. Several things I just do want to share with council. Everyone is aware, the presidency of the National League of Cities, it's almost like having a second job, although my job is here in the state of Athens. I'm glad to report that coming back from the League of Oregon Cities, which was in Portland, Oregon, that Portland, Oregon is doing quite well. And I'll leave it at that. The other thing which is notable is that I was in New York City attending the Climate Week in New York, and I was on several panels while there in New York City, talking about a lot of the amazing work that we're doing here in the city of Athens, and it was really heartening, not only for mayors and council members from across the United States, that were truly impressed with things like our carbon fee, our now 2.5 megawatt solar array down at the community center, our microgrid that's down at the water treatment center, SoulSmart Platinum that the city has achieved, which makes it 24 hours easy online permitting of residential solar for our residents here in the city of Athens. Everybody, every panel that I spoke on, and these aren't, the attendees, which is worth sharing with everybody, weren't just mayors and council members from across the United States. We had our international partners that were there as well. So collectively, it was enjoyable for me to be able to share and brag on what this city in the heart of Appalachian Ohio, home to Ohio University, which is a partner in what we're able to do with reducing our carbon emissions, with the students that are here with us tonight. You play a major role in that process as well, because you are typically walking everywhere on campus. You're helping us draw down and have, in the state of Ohio, the largest or the lowest carbon emissions per capita in the state of Ohio, and we are easily in the top 10% in the United States nationally in being a city that is reducing our carbon emissions, which is great for the planet. It's clearly great for Parkersburg because the wind always blows in that direction. But like I said, I want council to know that, that the work that I'm doing is, and the work that you guys do as well, is certainly elevating the recognition that the city of Athens is receiving right now. So that's, that's something I just, I feel compelled to really share with council. The other thing which is great is we had a wonderful ribbon cutting for our beloved Armory, which was built in 1916, preserved by Mayor Rick Abel, continued to be just held in the city trust through now three mayorships, but to finally see it come across the finish line to where it's a space that people can enjoy once again, whether it's for cowork, share work use, or event space in the Great Room, which is named after our dear former city planner, Paul Logue. The great space is now called the Logueville Great Hall, which is kind of a tongue-in-cheek thing that I mentioned during the celebration of life for our former planner for the city of Athens, Paul Logue, who put his heart and soul into dreaming as to what that building could become. But now, again, like I said, it's a space that can be used and experienced by all, which is a true facility of public trust. I think I've said enough. That's all I have to share.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. I don't see any others who might have a report to share this evening, so we'll move on to ordinances for third reading, beginning with Ordinance 8025, and that's an ordinance declaring properties located at 25 Central Avenue and 458 Richland Avenue no longer needed for municipal purpose, and authorizing the mayor to sell said properties to another political subdivision introduced by Councilmember Reisner. I mentioned earlier that I am acting as Finance and Personnel Chair today, and I would like to begin by making a motion to table Ordinance 80-25.
Second.
The reason being that we would like to approach this rather than with just one ordinance, with two separate ordinances, and that is because we'll be paying for the properties in two different ways. For Central Avenue, we'll be using CDBG funds, and for Richland Avenue, we'll be using city funds, selling at the appraised value. And in order to split this into two separate ordinances, this would need to be tabled. That would be the reason. Do we have any comments or discussion on the tabling of this ordinance? We've had a first and a second. Members Swank?
So if we table it, I take it that we'll have two new ordinances, I think you've said. Will we have those before committee at the next meeting next Tuesday?
That, or do we need to have them at committee, Clerk, or do we, can we go straight to first reading after? Okay. Member Swank, do you feel like it would be helpful to have a committee discussion on these?
Oh, yeah, I do. In fact, our bylaws say that we have to have a committee discussion.
Okay, all right, because it'll be two separate new, okay. Then, yes, we'll expect to have this on the agenda Tuesday because Monday is a holiday.
And then go on with the three reading process after that.
The following week, the following Monday. Thank you for that clarification. Any other comments or questions on the recommended tabling? Yes, Member Claude Keller?
I'm just curious. My, my timing is, or my question is similar to Member Swank's. Will starting this process all over negatively impact the sale of these properties in any way? Is there any hurry to get them on the market?
I will defer to administration. Auditor Hecht, do you have any comment?
No. The mayor has the one really involved in it, or I guess Director Stone, but I don't think so. There's no good reason for us to hang on to them any longer, but we have to go through our proper process because they were purchased from different funds and different rules apply.
Okay.
Mayor, do you have any additional comment?
No, just exactly what the auditor was saying. It doesn't affect anything with the sale of these properties, but as you're aware, you know, since one of the homes was purchased with CDBG funding, that, that money has to go back into our CDBG account. It can't go anywhere else. And so it's just making that clear with the two parcels as to where the funding needs to go once we do receive the monies from the Metropolitan Housing Authority.
And we will not have to advertise and accept bids. This is kind of an intergovernmental, and that Athens Metropolitan Housing is a political subdivision, so we can directly contract with them. Thank you.
Thank you, Law Director. Any other comments or questions on the motion to table? We've had a first and a second. All in favor of tabling Ordinance 80-25 indicate so by saying aye. And any opposed, say nay. All right, Ordinance 80-25 has been tabled by unanimous vote. Next, we have the third reading, Ordinance 86-25. An ordinance amending Athens City Code Title I, General Provisions Code Fees Established. So this is amending Athens City Code Title I, where we have our code fees. It's been introduced collectively by all members of council for citywide code consistency, and I will ask if we can have a motion to adopt Ordinance 86-25.
Still moved.
Second.
Terrific. We've had a motion and a second. Any comments or questions? None from council that I'm seeing? Any from the administration? All right, and anyone from the public? Seeing none, we'll move to the vote. All in favor of adopting Ordinance 86-25 indicate so by saying aye. Any opposed, please say nay. Okay, 86-25 has passed unanimously. Next, we have Ordinance 89-25, an emergency ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a combined participation agreement in the new national opioid settlement. This authorizes the mayor to execute the combined participation agreement in the new national opioid settlement, and confirms that settlement fund distribution will follow the statewide governmental entity and shareholder direct settlement agreement. This has been discussed in committee, and this evening is the third reading. Do we have any questions or comments? If I can make a, yes, Members Swank?
Mr. Mayor, I believe you've told us this, but I have completely forgotten. If we are fortunate enough to get such funds, what will we use them for here in the city?
You know, there's a number of things you can use them for. You can use them for educational, you know, educating in particular K through 12 about, you know, the impacts of opiates and various drugs. But as I mentioned, I have been in communication with Sean Stover, who works at Job to Family Services. This is an area that he knows very well, and my conversation has been looking at reentry programs for those who are recovering from substance abuse disorder and now entering back into the workforce. That's something that I think would be wonderful to see. I thought about doing something like this a long time ago, but it's, to me, it's just too difficult to try and accomplish, which was teaching individuals the skill set in an outdoor environment up in the Bailey's Trail System, because we have 88 miles of purpose-built continuous trails up there. But my thoughts are there are county funds under, going through suits such as this. There's state funding as well, the state share, and I think that it would be impactful to do something right here in the city of Athens, and so that's what I'm targeting. I'm meeting with a physician tomorrow morning to talk about some possibilities. Another person is Rebecca Robinson Miller, who heads up HOPE, which is also, which I've mentioned several times at the HOPE meetings about the settlement money that we received a long time ago from Pfizer, started with Pfizer, or Purdue Pharma, rather. And still, those are conversations going on with the city's share that we receive, but there are state-level buckets of money out there. I shouldn't say buckets, funding sources that are related to very similar suits, if not the same.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you for that question and response. Do we have other questions or comments on the opioid settlement? May I have a motion to adopt 89-25?
Still moved.
Second.
Wonderful. We've had a motion and a second. Any final questions or comments for discussion? From council members, from the administration, members of the public. Seeing none, we'll move to a vote. All those in favor of adopting Ordinance 89-25 indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say nay. All right, the Ordinance 89-25 has been unanimously adopted. Next, we have Ordinance 94-25, introduced by Alan Swank, Chair of Planning and Development Committee, and it's an ordinance amending, oh, sorry, I skipped 90.
Skipped one.
There we go. 90-25, excuse me, introduced by Micah McCary, Acting Chair of Finance and Personnel, and ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to advertise and accept bids and enter into a lease agreement with the highest bidder for the former fire department headquarters on Columbus Road. This has been discussed in committee and is being read for the third time tonight. As it says, authorizes the Service Safety Director to advertise bids, and we're going to be leasing to ensure that the city retains ownership of the site while leasing the property to the highest responsible bidder. Do we have any questions or comments about Ordinance 90-25? Member Claude Keller?
I'm just curious, Mayor Patterson, if you don't mind answering this question publicly. Are we, is the city looking at local entities for this, or could it end up in the hands of a non-locally-owned company or organization, the fire department?
Well, with a sealed bid, highest bidder, I mean, we can't exclude anybody from that bidding process on public record. You can't do that, and so it's whoever the bidder is. But I suspect that what we're going to see is mostly local individuals, because it's advertised and all the local media, the newspapers, and we get the word out. We don't, not to my knowledge, do we put it, send it out through the Columbus Dispatch, or do we send it out through, I don't know, some of the national newspapers? Why would you do that? I don't think you, to me, that'd be wasteful spending, because you're not going to get anybody who's going to come in and go, I want to use this fire station headquarters, former building on Columbus Road. But again, we don't know who's going to put in a bid on this thing. It could be anybody.
Thank you.
That's a great question. Any other questions, Members Swank?
Mr. Mayor, do we have a reserve amount on this, a minimum that we will accept?
Councilmember Swank, I, I am not 100% sure on that. I can get that information for you as soon as possible so that you know. I don't, I don't recall whether we have a minimum bid on this.
I wouldn't want two bidders, one at a dollar and one at two, giving it away.
So there is a clause in there to where we can, we can deny any and all bids if we choose to. So that needs to be clear as well with everybody. So that's a good, that's a good point. To your point, that would be quite the insult to the city of Athens if that were to happen, so I don't suspect that it will. We do know of two entities, which I'm not at liberty to share at this point in time, who were, showed interest, but we won't know until the bids come in for this process.
So Section 2, Number 1, does say the administration shall evaluate and advertise conditions in a minimum bid that ensures the city does not incur costs beyond the revenue generated by the lease under normal conditions. So that leaves it up to the administration to determine that.
I will get to that dollar amount. I'm pretty sure it's not $1, though.
I'll also read from the ordinance that the lease term shall be for a minimum of one year and up to six years. A term beyond six years will require future city council approval. Do we have any additional questions or comments about Ordinance 90-25 from council members? How about administration? And members of the public? May I have a motion to adopt 90-25?
Still moved.
Second.
We've had a motion, and it's been seconded. All in favor of adopting Ordinance 90-25, please indicate so by saying aye. And any opposed, please indicate so by saying nay. Okay, Ordinance 90-25 has been adopted unanimously. Now moving to 94-25, sponsored by Member Swank, and this is an ordinance amending Athens City Code Title 29, Housing Regulations, Chapter 29.03, Rental Dwelling, Short-Term Rental and Housing Permit, Authorized Agent, Title I, Chapter 29.03. Members Swank, I'll turn it over to you.
Here we go. I'm counting nine of these coming up. This ordinance does two things. Number one, no rental dwelling, short-term rental, or rooming house permit shall be issued or received unless the applicant designates in addition to themselves a designated local emergency contact. The second part, $25 per unit for each unit owned by a person or business residing 50 miles or more outside the corporation limit in addition to the standard rental permit fee. The first part of this establishes emergency contact. Heaven forbid if something happens and the city needs to get ahold of the person responsible for that property. We will now have contact information for that individual. Case in point, there was a fire up on West Washington Street, not, not West Washington, West State Street, not far from the middle school last year, and a situation like that, and others, it's nice to be able to get ahold of somebody right now, because in that case, we were very lucky that we didn't lose three or four Ohio University students. The second part, the $25, it's not a penalty, it's not a fine. Simply to correspond with people through registered mail and the like is getting very, very expensive, and this essentially just covers the city's cost of making those contacts. So, Mr. President, I would move that council pass 24, or excuse me, 94-25.
Second.
We've had a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion from council members? From administration? From members of the public? All right, we've had a motion and a second. All in favor of adopting Ordinance 94-25, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. All right, 94-25 has been passed unanimously. Thank you, Member Swank. Now moving on to 95-25, also introduced by Alan Swank, Chair of Planning and Development Committee, an ordinance granting a special right-of-way use permit at 22 West Stimson Avenue to place an in-ground sign in front of the building in the city's right-of-way. Members Swank?
This is a rather routine matter that comes before council on a regular basis, where someone wants to use part of the city's right-of-way. The city's right-of-way varies across the city and extends from the middle of the road to X number of feet onto your property. For those of you from northeastern Ohio, particularly Akron area, that strip of grass between the street and the sidewalk is called the devil's strip, and that is part of the city right-of-way. What this applicant wants to do is be able to put a sign identifying his apartment complex in the city right-of-way, and he went through the process of getting it done, and we're at the point now of granting him that privilege. Mr. President, I would move that council pass 95-25.
Second.
We've had a motion and a second. Any questions, comments, or other discussion from council members? Members of the administration? Members of the public? All right, seeing none, we've had, we've had a motion and a second. All in favor of adopting Ordinance 95-25, please indicate so by saying aye. Any opposed, please indicate so by saying nay. All right, 95-25 has passed unanimously. We now move to ordinances for second reading, and for second readings, we typically just read the title, and if there's no comments, questions, or other discussion, we move on. Ordinance 85-25, an ordinance amending certain sections of the Athens City Code Title IX, General Regulations, Chapter 9.12, Streets and Sidewalks, Section 12. General Regulations, Chapter 9.12, Streets and Sidewalks, Section 9.1218, Materials on Street or Sidewalk, introduced by Councilmember Spielness. Seeing no, hands indicating questions or comments, I'll move on to ordinance 96-25, an ordinance amending the 2025 Appropriation Ordinance 115-24, introduced by Councilmember McCary. And seeing no questions or comments, that takes us right on to ordinances for first reading, starting with ordinance 100-25, an ordinance authorizing the service safety director to enter into a pre-annexation agreement with the Athens County Commissioners, introduced by Councilmember Swank.
Athens County Children's Services is building a new facility down on the far east side, and as such, they will need additional city services, mainly sewer and water. As part of that agreement, we're going to annex that property into the city, which will be a tremendous benefit for that facility. But secondly, for the city, and that they employ somewhere between 80 and 100 people, and all those people will now be on the city's income tax rolls, which will help our general fund. That's basically what we're talking about doing. This is the pre-annexation agreement. This takes several steps. So you'll be hearing about this quite a bit over the next six to eight months, because it has to go through us and the county and various other places. It's a long, complicated process for something that's really pretty easy and badly needed.
For the public, those readings that are up for first reading have been discussed in committee, and if we don't have any questions or comments, then we will consider it read for the first time. Do we have any questions or comments on ordinance 100-25? Alright, it's been read for the first time. Next, we have ordinance 101-25, introduced by Jessica Thomas, Acting Chair of...
I think it's supposed to be City and Safety.
City and Safety Services, yes. There's a error there that says Transportation Committee. But we have ordinance 101-25, as an ordinance authorizing the service safety director to advertise and accept bids where necessary and enter into contracts for the construction of a new water line along Jacob Street from Graham to Stony Brook, Project Number 386. Member Thomas?
Thank you. This is also associated with previous ordinance with the Athens County Children's Services new building. We discussed this in committee. This is basically going to be the city's opening of bids to do the street work or the waterline work to connect them or get the pipe there to connect them to city water and sewer. The wherest is our, whereas this new water line is to provide adequate fire flow to support the sprinkler system at the new Athens County Children's Services facility. And whereas, since the Athens County Children's Services is a water and sewer customer outside the city limits, the city is working on an annexation agreement with the county in exchange for city funding the increased line size. And whereas the upgrade will increase fire flow on Utah and Strathmore due to interconnection with those lines. And jumping down then to Section 2, this will hereby amended by appropriating from the unappropriated balance the sum of $380,000 to the Water Fund, transaction, Water Fund 740.635, transaction code 500, and authorizes the service safety director to hereby authorize up to expend $380,000 from the Water Fund. This ordinance is read for the first time.
Alright, do we have any questions or comments on 101-25? Great, thank you, Member Thomas. Next, ordinance 102-25, introduced by Alan Swank, Chair of Planning and Development, an ordinance indicating the services the city of Athens will provide for the proposed annexation of approximately 1.175 acres of land along Theater Lane, as requested by the annexation petitioners and declaring an emergency. Chair Alan Swank, do you have anything to say?
Yeah, these next two things are very much related. This is for the enlargement of the Hugh White Honda car dealership down on Columbus Road. Theater, Theater Lane, the reason it's called Theater Lane, there used to be a drive-in movie theater back there many, many, many years ago. And essentially, this just lists the services the city will provide. The city of Athens hereby states that it will provide all municipal services available to other parts of the city, including but not limited to fire and police protection, emergency medical services, waste collection, water and sanitary sewer service, zoning, and street maintenance immediately upon annexation.
I believe that the rules have to be suspended tonight. We are on a time constraint to get it back to the commissioners.
So the county commissioners need this ASAP?
Well, it was within, it's within 20 days of the annexation petition being filed.
Alright.
So we have this calculated, so the rules do need to be suspended tonight.
Alright, so we can honor that contract. Mr. President, I would move that council suspend the rules on, what is this, number 102-25?
Second.
Alright, it's been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments or discussion on the suspension of the rules? Alright, seeing none from council, any comments or questions on the suspension of the rules from the administration? And from the public? Alright, voting on suspending the rules for ordinance 102-25, all in favor indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
And any opposed, say nay. Alright, the rules have been suspended. Member Swank?
Mr. President, I would move that council pass 102-25.
Second.
We'd have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance 102-25. Any discussion from council members? Member Swank?
Just for the benefit of the public and the students with us today, normally, an ordinance has to go through a three-reading process. Once tonight, once, two more, second time in two more weeks, and a third in two weeks after that. But as you heard from the law director, we need to have this file within 20 days of filing, or it becomes null and void. Consequently, the need to suspend the rules and vote on this tonight.
Thank you, Member Swank. Do we have any comments or questions on adoption from the administration and from the public? Okay, we're ready to take it to a vote then. All in favor of adopting ordinance 102-25 indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Okay, the ayes have it, and 102-25 has been passed unanimously. Next, for first reading, we have ordinance 103-25, also introduced by Councilmember Swank, an ordinance establishing Title 29 Housing Regulations, Chapter 29.37, Unoccupied and Vacant Property Registration.
The best way to describe what we're doing in this is to read the purpose of this proposed ordinance. The purpose of this chapter is to establish a program for identifying and registering unoccupied and vacant residential, commercial, and industrial buildings and structures, determine responsibilities of owners of vacant buildings and structures, and to speed the rehabilitation of vacant properties and buildings for productive use. If any of you have driven from here to Lexington, Kentucky, and gone the back way, there's a little town about an hour, an hour and 15 minutes east of Lexington that looks like one night everybody went to bed, and the next day they woke up and everybody left town. It's depressing. Fortunately, Athens has been able to maintain a vibrant, vibrant occupation of our buildings here, but we do have some that are empty, seven or eight out on East State Street at the current time. What this hopes to do is to be able to identify those and then develop a program where they can be occupied and put to good use. Not only the commercial buildings, but with the housing situation we have, not only in Athens but in Ohio and the country, to provide housing for people rather than just having buildings set empty.
Thank you, Member Swank. Do we have any additional comments or discussion?
Just real quick.
Yes, Member Spielness?
Yeah, in addition to that very well-done commentary, it's really important that properties don't go deteriorate to the point where they're dangerous. I mean, people can get squatters in there, you can get animals in there, you can get bugs and all kinds of stuff in there, and fires can start, and that could affect a neighborhood. So it's, it's really a safety issue as well as everything else. So I think that's important to keep in mind.
Thank you for that clarification. Any other comments or discussion from council members, members of the administration, members of the public? Seeing none, ordinance 103-25 has been read for the first time. Thank you, Member Swank. Next, for first reading, 104-25, an ordinance amending Title 29 Housing Regulations, Chapter 29.37, Definitions, from Member Swank.
Many of the ordinances before us this evening are brand-new, and consequently, to make them legal and binding, we have to define certain terms. And that's what this ordinance does. It defines the terms designated local contact, which we talked about with the property management. Second, evidence of vacancy, which relates to the previous ordinance that we discussed, unoccupied vacant building. All of these are very, very clearly defined in this ordinance. In case we ever have a legal issue, we have it here in black and white and easy to understand. And that's what this ordinance is about, establishing the definitions of those terms in other ordinances.
Thank you, Member Swank. Do we have comments or questions on this first reading from council members, from members of the administration, from members of the public? Seeing none, ordinance 104-25 has been read for the first time. Next, ordinance 105-25, an ordinance amending Athens City Code Title 1, General Provisions, Chapter 1.03, Code Fees Established to Include Section 29.37.06, introduced by Member Swank.
To put some teeth into 104-25, 105-25 lays out the fees for unoccupied and vacant residential property registration. It varies by year. Year 1, $300. Year 2, $600. Year 3, $1,200. Year 4, $2,400. And year 5 and each thereafter, $4,800. Vacant Commercial and Industrial Property Registration, year 1, $600. Year 2, $1,200. Year 3, $2,400. Year 4, $4,800. And year 5 and each year thereafter, $9,600.
Thank you, Member Swank. Do we have any discussion on this first reading from council members, from members of the administration? Mayor?
I would like to make comment. I appreciate this ordinance moving forward, especially this first reading. If you, if you're listening to the numbers year after year after year that Councilmember Swank just indicated to a lot of you, that probably sounds like that's a lot. But I would counter that by saying that vacant residence, that vacant rental unit that could house a young professional, that could house a graduate student or undergraduate student, that could house, you know, someone who has aged out of the place in which they currently live and are looking for something to downsize into, if it accommodates that, you know, you start, I look at things through that lens. What is the revenue lost? Not rent, the revenue lost by the person who could be living in that domicile. And the same holds true with the business. If you think about it, to have a building just sitting there fallow, as Councilmember Spielness was indicating, the things that could happen to that building, that's absolutely true. But I think the other thing is, what is the economic development revenue lost by not having that building being a performing building in the city of Athens? So I just want to throw that out there, because I could imagine some people going, wow, that's, that's really steep, what's happening. But again, I think you also need to weigh that with what that structure, whether it's a rental unit or a home, or if it's a structure that is a commercial structure, you know, you have to keep that in mind, too, and kind of monetize that along with the losses of not having it functioning, because someone just opts to sit on it and not use it for anything.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Member Spielness?
That's okay. So, let's see, I brought this, two things. I brought this to the West Side Community Association, and they were all in favor of this, based on their experiences with, with houses. But they also thought that the fees were not that high. They said, oh, they should be even higher. So I thought that was rather an interesting comment. And Deputy Safety Director Chickie had the Affordable Housing Commission members look it over and provide some feedback with this, which I thought was, they provided some really good feedback, and I think that was a really good use of a commission, is to do exactly what we've been charged to do, and to provide some input to the city on these kinds of things. So I was really appreciated that, and I think it was a good opportunity to have input to the city.
Thank you, Members Spielness. Members of the public, do you have any comments on the first reading of 105-25? Seeing none, it's been read for the first time. Next, we have ordinance 106-25, introduced by Alan Swank, Chair of Planning and Development Committee, an ordinance establishing a do-not-knock registration program through the Northeast Ohio Public Energy Council. Member Swank?
What 106-25 does is establish a policy for commercial entities to not knock on your door to solicit your business, or whatever it may be. What we see most often in Athens are electric companies and gas companies. And while we don't want to discourage trade business, unfortunately, so many of these things look good on the surface and end up haunting you three, six, 12 months down the road. That, if I've got a deal for you today, isn't quite the deal down the road. So this program, working with NOPEC, NOPEC is the Northeast Ohio Public Energy Council, which is our gas aggregation company, we're going to establish, we're going to talk about establishes in this program, where you can opt in, you can opt in to be on the list. That list will be kept here at City Hall, safe and secure. When someone comes to get a permit to solicit in Athens, they will be provided with that list. And basically, it's kind of like the speed limit on the side of the road. You need to go to speed limit, in this case, you need not call on those entities. And again, these are for commercial purposes. Nonprofits, religious organizations, Girl Scout cookies, that's all still fine and dandy. But these are for commercial entities. Not only will you be on the list, you can also get a little sticker that you can put on your front door with the NOPEC logo, and it says, do not knock. So that also warns those who are soliciting, whether your house is part of that program or not. Currently, NOPEC has about 25 or 30 municipalities in the state of Ohio that have used it successfully. And in this day and age, as some people have told me, it also provides a certain level of protection for those who don't like people knocking on their doors.
Thank you for that thorough explanation, Member Swank. Do we have any discussion from council members on this first reading? From members of the administration? How about members of the public? Yes, please approach the podium, and you'll have three minutes to share your remarks. But first, we'd ask you to introduce yourself with your name, address, and whether you're representing yourself or an organization.
Hi there. I'm Mitchell Mollison, Ohio University student. I live over at 101 Mill Street, and I'm in a class to cover you guys. This is definitely something I appreciate. My current house is associated with university rentals. Would this be a specific thing that all rental companies could incorporate into their housing, or would rentals or residences of those specific houses have to register themselves?
Mr. Mayor, would you like to field that one?
Absolutely. The individual unit would have to register, which is, is fine. It's not cumbersome to do, you know, once this goes through council and authorizing this. I think you'd be hard-pressed to get a landlord, especially in a multi-unit, although there are some multi-unit, units out there that already say no soliciting on these properties. But, you know, the easiest way is just, if, if that kind of thing bothers you, get on the registry once it works its way through city council, and then you would be added to the no-knock list, and therefore, vendor, a solicitor or peddler cannot knock on your door.
And as we work through this, I'm sure we'll work very closely, the administration through the code office with the university off-campus housing, to get the information, educational stuff out to students who are renting properties other than staying in a dormitory.
Awesome. Follow-up question. Would there be a system or a way for rental companies like Athens Ohio Rentals or University Rentals to have this automatically added to all of their properties in the near future?
Mr. Mayor?
They, they could. Absolutely. If there was any multi-unit, you know, apartment complex out there that wanted to do this, we would gladly put them on the no-knock list. Then it would cover every unit in that apartment complex through the manager. But again, I would start with, or work it through with your manager, fine. Do whatever you feel like you, you need to do. But I really appreciate your comments and your questions.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Do we have anyone else from the public who'd like to comment on 106-25, the do-not-knock registration program? Seeing no additional comments, 106-25 has been read for the first time. And we will move on to ordinance 107-25, introduced by Alan Swank, City and Safety Services Committee? Yes, okay, sorry. An ordinance amending Athens City Code Title 11, Business Regulations, Chapter 11.04, An ordinance amending Athens City Code Title XI, Business Regulations, Chapter 11.04, Vending, Peddling, and Soliciting, Section 11.0417, Trespassing of Peddlers or Solicitors.
Just as we had teeth in the unoccupied building ordinance, this is the teeth in this ordinance. No peddler or solicitor shall attempt to peddle or solicit upon any property that has a public display, sign, or warning prohibiting peddling or soliciting on the property, or is registered with the city's do not knock program in accordance with ordinance 106-25. Peddlers or solicitors who violate this section may be charged with trespassing and may have their licenses revoked or suspended upon the discretion of the Director of Code Enforcement. Thank you, President McCary.
Thank you, Members Swank. Do we have any discussion on ordinance 107-25 from council members? From members of the administration? From members of the public? Seeing none, ordinance 107-25 has been read for the first time. And moving on to ordinance 108-25, introduced by Micah McCary, Acting Chair of Finance and Personnel, an ordinance approving a then-and-now certificate for payment in declaring an emergency. Section 1 reads that it's an ordinance authorizing a then-and-now certificate for a payment to Sleep Number Corporation in the amount of $5,754.48. And this is something that we have to do when we've made a payment that's been incurred before, the formal purchase order has been in place. This is a routine matter for us, but it is a time-sensitive matter for us when it comes to bill payment. So tonight, I will be making a motion to suspend the rules in favor of adopting ordinance 108-25 so that this payment can be made.
Second.
We've had a motion and a second. Do we have discussion on the motion to suspend the rules for ordinance 108-25? Seeing none from the council members, any from the administration? From members of the public? Seeing none, we'll move to a vote for suspension of the rules to adopt 108-25. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, indicate so by saying nay. The ayes have it, and 108-25 has had the rule suspended. I will now make a, or request a motion for adoption of 108-25.
Still moved.
Can I have a second? We've had a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion from council members? Members Swank?
Just in case anybody's wondering, Sleep Number Corporation, what this is for is for beds for the new fire station. We need places for firefighters to sleep, and this is for the beds they've been sleeping on for the last few days.
Thank you, Members Swank. That's an important point of clarification. From the administration, do we have any comments or discussion on adopting this resolution, this ordinance? None. And from the public? Seeing none, we'll move to a vote, all in favor of adopting ordinance 108-25. Please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, and 108-25 has been adopted unanimously following suspension of the rules. Next, we have ordinance 109-25, and that is introduced by Micah McCary, Acting Chair of Finance and Personnel Committee, an ordinance amending the 2025 Appropriation Ordinance 115-24. Section 1 reads that the 2025 Appropriation Ordinance 115-24 is hereby amended by appropriating from the unappropriated balance the following sums: $20,000 to Water Administration Fund to cover payments to Lyax Water as part of the Kershaw-Green Annexation Agreement, and $100,000 to Sewer Plant Fund to cover electricity increase and increasing the total appropriation by said amount. Members of council may recall that this was discussed in committee, and I will also remind folks that this is the best deal that we have going for us as far as the money that we're making off of this from the customers. Do we have any questions or discussion from council members on the first reading of ordinance 109?
It needs suspending.
Yes, that's right. We will first, before going into questions and comments, we'll make, I'll ask for a motion to suspend 109-25, and...
So I'll make a motion.
Thank you. And can we have a second?
Second.
We've had a motion and a second for suspending the rules on 109-25. Now, any discussion on suspension of the rules?
No.
Not on suspension of the rules? Okay. Not from council, from members of the administration, from members of the public? Seeing none, just on suspension of the rules, we'll call for a vote. All in favor, indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Okay, the rules have been suspended. Now we can take discussion on the adoption of 109-25. Member Claveller?
I'm curious, if you don't mind, Mayor Patterson, do you have any data about how much the electricity bill has gone down at the sewer plant since the solar array went in?
I don't have it. My fingertips, but I can easily get that for you.
It's, I'm a bit surprised to see an increase in electricity costs of $100,000 after we got that huge solar array over there.
Yeah, that I can speak to. I mean, the increase, and I mentioned this during the, in committee, is that we had more heavy rain events this past summer than we've seen in a long time. If you recall, last summer, not this summer, but last summer, we were in the middle of a three-month-long, almost four-month-long drought with very little rain, and so things were clicking along just fine. But when we have these large downpours that impacted the city, that almost, it's so predictable that it's going to impact the wastewater treatment plant, and when it impacts the wastewater treatment plant, they've got to run the blowers longer and harder than they've had to throughout the rest of the year. You can't predict, can't predict, well, I can predict climate change is happening, but in terms of these insular events that occurred and with the frequency in which they occurred, that we can't predict. And so that led to a larger-than-normal power use down there, and all the solar, the whole 2.5-megawatt solar array wouldn't be able to keep up with what we were trying to manage. Plus, they wouldn't be producing as well as they would on a sunny day because you've got rain coming down.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Do we have comments on this first reading from members of the public? So we've suspended the rules, and for the reason that the payment is due October 8th to Lyax. And now, we can go for a vote, motion to accept ordinance, or to adopt 109-25?
Still moved. Second.
All right. We've had a motion and a second. All in favor, indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, and ordinance 109-25 has been adopted. All right, next, we are on to, that was 109, now we're on to ordinance 110-25, introduced by all members of council, an ordinance establishing a cybersecurity policy for the city of Athens. And I will read Section 1, Athens City Council hereby establishes a cybersecurity policy for the city of Athens, Ohio, more fully described as Exhibit A attached here too and incorporated herein by reference. And this ordinance shall be in full force and effect at the earliest moment permitted by law, upon passage and approval from the mayor. This was discussed in committee and is now being read for the first time. Do we have comments or discussion from council members? From members of the administration? From members of the public? Seeing none, ordinance 110-25 has now been read for the first time. And we move on to the first reading of ordinance 111-25, an ordinance providing for the issuance of not to exceed 4,900, I'm sorry.
I wish it was four at that house.
$4,905,000 of bonds by the city of Athens, Ohio, for the purpose of currently refunding all of a portion of outstanding bonds issued to pay part of the cost of the swimming pool facility and matters related thereto, and declaring an emergency introduced by a member McCary. This was discussed earlier this evening, and I would like to make a motion that we adopt, sorry, suspend the rules for ordinance 111-25.
Second.
All right. And now, any discussion on the suspension of the rules from council members? From administration? From members of the public? Okay, and voting on suspension of the rules for 111-25? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, indicate so by saying nay. All right. Ordinance 111-25 has had the rule suspended, and now I'd like to request a motion to adopt 111-25.
Second.
All right. I made the motion. Member Thomas, second. Sorry. And any discussion on adoption of 111-25? From council members? From members of the administration? And from members of the public? All right. Seeing none, ordinance 111-25 has now been passed unanimously. All right. That concludes our readings for the evening, and we move on to announcements and other business. And I would like to start with a motion to approve appointments to the Affordable Housing Commission's Rental Inspection Process Subcommittee, and pass that on to Members Spielis. We will also be giving a short presentation with updates.
Thank you. So before we announce the people who have been appointed, as well as voting on those people that you have a choice on, I wanted to show the, just a very quick, this is supposed to, okay. I wanted to show a very quick overview of what, a draft of what we're kind of looking at. This is following pretty much what we did with the pedestrian accessibility committee and the process we used there, which, as you recall, was really quite amazing, in my opinion. I was on it, so I guess that's bragging a bit, but I wasn't the key person in many respects. But, so just to introduce myself to those people here, I was a researcher, program evaluator, and former associate professor in the Department of Social Work. I taught social welfare history, including housing policy. For today, I just want to show briefly the proposed phases and initial ideas, action plans, and an idea of the kinds of goals that we're hoping that we would achieve through this process. So again, we can't, as a committee, do anything but advise, but we're hoping that with the kind of collaboration that we're looking for with the city and with the expertise involved, that we can provide recommendations that would achieve these kinds of goals. 100% annual inspection rate, a 10% reinspection rate, consistent inspection practices, maximum efficiency, transparent code compliance records, a cooperative relationship, ongoing relationship with the Ohio University Off-Campus Housing, the City Code Office, Fire Department, landlords and other stakeholders, and hopefully some educational programs for landlords and renters so that they have a better idea of what their rights and responsibilities are. This has all been shared with those people who are recommended candidates, as well as with Ohio University and other folks. So initially, obviously, you'd collect some background information, determine what's available, what are the laws that are relevant, review code inspection policies and processes, collect and review related kinds of things, like what does the fire department do to inspect? What does the public housing and public health, for that matter? So identify some best practices through other kinds of professional organizations, et cetera, and compare and contrast with other cities who, of course, especially town-gown cities, that have obviously the same kinds of issues that we do. And review landlord information and compliance information. So then you'd collect data, and I spoke with Professor Sudis about this, and we may be surveying your class or doing a focus group with you guys. So we want to do surveys. We want to do, we'll look at student renters, low-income renters, renters with disabilities. Of course, we want to look at landlords and what their concerns are. We want to do focus groups with specific groups as well. Those are obviously smaller, and look at what they are doing and what their concerns are. And then interview those people who are experts and people, of course, within code enforcement and landlords and other stakeholders. We want to review technology and see what some up-to-date, really interesting ideas of making this whole process easier and more transparent to the public. That's been a real concern, is to understand better, you know, what the properties around here look like. Then looking at costs and funding. How much does it actually cost to do rental inspections? That's been looked at several years ago, and we could look at it again. And then, what are our funding options? And there might be some creative ideas out there that aren't being used now. Then, of course, we would compile and analyze and report all the data and information, as we did with the pedestrian accessibility commission. So, and also, we have connected with the LASCO Legal Aid and of Southeast and Central Ohio. They have a couple of interns who are willing to help us look for some of this information and have actually already collected a lot. We've also connected with Dr. Shaw at the university, who is interested in...
First, from council members, and now from the administration.
I do have a question. Councilmember Spielis, you were appointed by Sam Crowell as a council member, but are you serving in two roles? Are you...
Yes.
You are?
Yes.
Interesting.
But remember, I will be off council at the end of the year, and so then I will be serving on what?
Any other discussion, questions, concerns on this motion to accept the recommended appointed individuals? Seeing none from the administration to the public? All right. We've had a motion and a second, all in favor of accepting these appointment recommendations, indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. All right. Thank you very much. The individuals named by Members Spielis have now been appointed. Next, I'd like to ask Members Swank for any announcements.
Got a couple. Both these are a notice of public hearing, and I will read these. They're not long. Athens City Council will hold a public hearing at 7:00 PM on Monday, October 20th, 2025, in the council chambers on the third floor of the city building. This public hearing is to consider a recommendation from the Athens City Planning Commission to amend Athens City Zoning Code, Section 24.04.03, permitted uses in R3 residential zone multifamily to permit temporary housing shelters as a permitted accessory use for the gathering place located at 1, 5, and 7 Congress Street. The full text of the recommendation is available by contacting Debbie Walker at dwalker@ci.athens.oh.us. Interested parties are invited to attend and express their opinions with respect thereto. Anyone needing special accommodation to attend the meeting should contact the City Council Office, 8 East Washington Street, Athens, Ohio, 740-592-3342. This was published in the Athens Messenger on Saturday, September 30th, 2025, which is more than the 30 days required prior to the hearing. The second notice of public hearing, I didn't do the whole thing or just the...
Just the pertinent information's fine.
Okay. You'll do, yeah. This public hearing is to consider a recommendation from the Athens City Planning Commission to amend Athens City Zoning Code, Sections 23.04.03, permitted uses in R3 residential zone multifamily, and 23.04.07B3, general business zone, to permit temporary housing shelters as a conditionally permitted use. The full text of the recommendation is available by contacting Debbie Walker. This was published in the Athens Messenger on Saturday, September 27th, which again is more than the 30 days required for public notice of a public hearing. Thank you, President McCary.
Thank you. Next, I might need the mayor's help with this announcement, but we have a celebration coming up on October 14th at the community center, celebrating 25 years of the community center, and that is going to be 5:30 to 7:00 PM at the community center here in Athens. Mr. Mayor, do you have anything to add?
No, you summed it up. Director of Arts Parks and Recreation, Catherine Ann Jordan, has put together, I think, a rather interesting host of things for people to do to help celebrate the 25 years of the community center.
Thank you. And before we move on to opportunities for citizens to... And before we move on to opportunities for citizens to speak on legislative items not already covered on the agenda, do we have any additional announcements from council members, Members Swank?
And for those attending that, members of council, we need to get up here pretty quickly because next week our meeting is on Tuesday, not on Monday. Monday is a national holiday, and as such, we don't meet on those days. So Tuesday at 7:00, we're here.
Great reminder, thank you. Mr. Mayor or administration, any other announcements? Law director, auditor? We will move into opportunities for members of the public to speak on items not covered on the agenda today. And I know we do have some folks here who specifically came to commemorate LGBT History Month, but for whoever speaks, we'll ask you to limit your comments to three minutes and to begin by approaching the podium and sharing your name, your address, and whether you are representing yourself or an organization. And we already have one person who's ready to take the podium.
My name is Jack Stoffer. I live on Elmwood. I'd like to address the coming legislation of 2504 and 2505. Let's say the gathering place is providing a service for some downtrodden folks in the city. This is about the permanent taxpaying legal residents of our towns and neighborhood. Now, let's put aside our political views and personal feelings and concentrate on a common-sense approach to the council and mayor's well-intentioned, but in many people's opinion misguided, attempt to help three, I say with a question mark, three unfortunates. I had a lengthy talk with the police chief on Wednesday, the first. I learned several things that we will get into later. The one thing that still stands out to me is, as of last Wednesday, not one council member has contacted him about his feelings or opinions, let alone the number of crimes being committed by the homeless in our town. My hometown, the town I love. In regards to 2504, the wording, "No more than three huts may be installed per available toilet within 200 feet." I talked to Lisa on Friday, and she couldn't answer my question about how to interpret this. So why don't we clean up the language so it is certain that only three huts will be there for two years, as is suggested in your case, 2504? Or should we figure it is intentionally vague so it can be expanded with no further public input? Now, it looked to me like the mayor was pissed off in a meeting saying that this won't be inviting other misfortunate souls to our community. I and many others with common sense think otherwise. I Googled humans' path of least resistance today. I barely get on the computer, but here we go. AI overview. Humans take the path of least resistance as an evolutionary survival mechanism, choosing the easiest, most efficient route to conserve energy and resources. And if you Google that AI overview, you could increase your knowledge. In regards to 2505, if, as the mayor states, this will not increase the number of homeless that this legislation covers, then again, as I say, if you folks are not intending to increase the number of homeless to Athens, then it would remain a giant question mark as to why 2505 is needed. If the mayor speaks the truth, then indeed, there is no reason for 2505 to proceed any further. I, as well as others, call on the city administration and this board to drop 2505. 2505 states temporary housing, huts, and tents. This is a slippery slope, and you folks are trying to head our sweet little town downhill.
Okay, we've reached the end of your time, sir. I'm afraid we'll have to move on.
The folks that elected you to look out for us, not run over us. Thanks for the extra 10 seconds.
Thank you. I appreciate the fact that folks have been waiting, so we'll keep right along with public comments. Do we have anyone else who'd like to take the podium tonight? If so, please do so and share your name, your address, and if you're representing yourself or an organization.
Hello, I'm Chris Neville. My address is 24 West 3rd Street, The Plains, Ohio. So I'm not an Athens resident, but I am here representing the Southeastern Ohio Rainbow Alliance, for which I am the president. My board and I are honored to be present today to celebrate LGBTQ History Month and are fortunate to be able to have such wonderful partners and advocates in our local government. The board and I would like to extend our greatest gratitude to Mayor Patterson for always being a fierce advocate for our community. We would also like to extend thanks to all of the people on city council and all others that helped make the proclamation for LGBTQ History Month possible. It is in this grassroots work that we all thrive and make a difference. We look forward to the future as we grow and foster a stronger partnership to help Athens become better and safer for all, as well as expanding Athens Pride Fest into a larger regional festival. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Do we have anyone else who'd like to speak this evening on topics not already covered on the agenda? Please feel free to take the podium. You'll have three minutes, and we'd like you to begin by sharing your name, address, and if you're representing yourself or an organization.
Hi, my name is Jamie. I am representing United Campus Ministry, and I live on 168 North Lancaster Street. I've lived in Athens for about five years now. I wrote notes, but I'm just going to speak with my heart. I wanted to say sincerely thank you very much for adopting October as LGBT History Month. I think that's wonderful. The reason I moved to Athens, Ohio, was specifically because when I was doing college tours, I was counting the amount of pride flags that I saw on my college tour, and Athens won! And that's why I'm here. So I wanted to say thank you very much. Y'all have a very strong hand in shaping the community that we live in, and it's very meaningful to me and many others. So I just wanted to say thank you very much. I look forward to seeing all the wonderful things that can come of that.
Do we have anyone else who'd like to speak this evening? If you'd begin by sharing your name, your address, and if you're representing yourself or an organization, you'll then have three minutes.
My name is Ari Faber, and I live at 23 Meadow Lane. I'm the Executive Director of United Campus Ministry, a space that has proudly served the community for over 50 years at the intersection of faith and justice. UC is a place where people of all genders, sexualities, and faiths, or none at all, are not only welcomed, but celebrated. I stand before you tonight to voice my incredible gratitude for formally acknowledging October as LGBTQ+ History Month in our city. It's not only a symbolic gesture, but it's a statement of our values. It's a recognition that the struggles, courage, and brilliance of LGBTQ+ individuals are part of the history of our nation, our state, and yes, the beloved city of Athens. LGBTQ+ History Month honors the activists, trailblazers, and ordinary people whose extraordinary lives have shaped this fight for equality. It reminds us that every night, every right we hold, every freedom, every safe space, every chance to live authentically was hard-won, and it reminds us that this work is far from over. Athens is already a community known for its diversity, for its spirit of acceptance, and for the commitment to justice. By officially recognizing LGBTQ+ History Month, the city sends a clear and undeniable message that everyone belongs here, everyone's story matters, everyone's life has values. It honors LGBTQ+ residents who live, work, and raise families here. It acknowledges the ongoing struggle for justice. It sends a message to the next generation that they are valued, seen, and celebrated. This is not just about celebration, it is about visibility, affirmation, enclosure, and courage.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other members of the public who'd like to speak on items not covered on the agenda this evening? All right, seeing none, I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Council is adjourned at 8:24 PM.